11:03, I'm calling the meeting to order. Today's Elyria Planning Commission meeting. January 5th at 11:04. So first off, Happy New Year to you all. And we have a really busy agenda today. So I'm actually gonna be moving some things around on the agenda. So that we can get through this meeting in a way that we're not holding people up for long discussions. So. Jim, should I make a motion to amend the agenda or just?
No, I don't think.
Okay, fine. Alright, so let's do a, go ahead with roll call. Tom Aiden.
Here.
Sam Battle. Absent. Barry Hubbard.
You did.
Here.
Oh, Sam's here?
He's muted. He's on the screen. He's just muted.
Okay, I don't see Sam.
It says Sam's iPhone.
Okay, so we'll see if that's Sam. Barry Hubbard.
Here.
Chad Schneider.
Here.
Don Calvert.
Here.
Mayor Whitfield here and Derek Tedrow.
Here.
Awesome. We'll see if Sam can get his device unmuted and if that's Mr. Battle. But first on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from December 1. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Schneider. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tedrow. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We have no miscellaneous correspondence, new or old business. As I mentioned, we're gonna move some stuff around on the agenda. We're gonna start with shram signs. As the first piece on the agenda, and this is a request for a waiver of the design review guidelines. For the installation of signage. The design review guidelines indicate signage should be designed to integrate into the overall architectural style of the building. And consist of individual letters. The proposed signage consists of channel letters and cabinet sign. Dean, do you want to give us some background on this project? Let's get you unmuted.
There you go. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I didn't know I had to click it. So the sign is for the Hunan King Restaurant. And the situation that they have is they have an existing box sign. And pursuant to the city rules, we are allowed to put a new face in that sign. But I know that the city has always wanted to go with upscale sign. But there's some information that they need that just can't all be channel letters. And so we normally, in every city I work in, 50, 60 cities a year. We make a secondary contour type bubble sign. Now, Elyria does allow bubble type signs if they're within 30 inches, 30 inches tall square. But it's too small to get what we need across. What we're trying to get across, obviously, is Chinese restaurant and the phone number. If they can't have this, they're gonna go with a face, and that's low scale. That's an old sign. It's a new face, but. This is way better for the city of Elyria than to get this. And I think it should be where you guys allow this box sign. It's very small. It's a contour sign, what we call it. It's got rounded corners. There, there, you can see it greatly. So you can see their old sign, and that thing's been up there for 15, 20 years. And we can refurbish it and paint it. And put a flat face on there, but it's really not making the city of Elyria upscale. And throughout the years, it's always been, hey, we want to get channel letters. We want to make it more upscale. And so that's the situation. But the city does allow a reface, but I would rather sell them a brand new set of channel letters. With this tagline, Chinese restaurant with the phone number. Their delivery service, so the phone number is huge. They get a lot of calls for that. I mean, a Chinese restaurant has to have their phone number. I don't think it's terrible. It's a good layout. It looks great to me. And so I'm hoping you give me the guy, the little bit of waiver to allow that bottom sign to be allowed.
Thank you, Dean. Staff report. Director of Community Development, Ashley Scott, can you give the staff report?
Yeah, so Dean did a pretty good job explaining what the proposed signage is going to look like. The zoning is compliant. The channel letters are compliant with our guidelines. However, a waiver is going to be needed for that tagline. I do recommend approval on that because it is a tagline and there are going to be new channel letters installed.
Thank you, Director Scott. Any questions from the committee? Any, so this isn't a proponent-opponent sort of thing, right, Jim? This is just a straight up and down vote, correct?
Technically, if someone could object, I would ask. I don't think it.
Are there any objections to the signage, the request for the variance? Alright, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the waiver of design review guidelines.
Mayor, is Sam on, so we don't have to give a warning that we only have six votes? Is he actually there?
Mr. Battle? I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, we have a full committee. I just didn't know whether we had to give the admonition that we only had six. We have a full committee, okay.
Yes, I'm here. I'm listening on my phone.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Battle. So, thank you for that, Mr. Taylor. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the waiver for the design review guidelines for the installation of the signage of trans signs by Hunan King. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Schneider. Is there a second?
Second, Battle.
Second by Mr. Battle. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And were there any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck, Dean.
Thank you very much. And I wanted to say congratulations, Mayor Whitfield, for being like it. I didn't want to say it beforehand. I have never met you before. It would make it look like I was sucking up to you. Sucking up for the next job, you know. Congratulations. And everybody that doesn't know me, I'll see you guys later. Have a great day. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Bye-bye.
Next, we have two public hearings. Let me check my notes to make sure that's correct. But the first one I see is Express Wash Concepts, 4543 Northridge Road. Is there a business address, but the request is for a rezone of parcel number 0624032103-036. Located at 621 49th Street, Elyria, Ohio, from Business Neighborhood District to Business Automotive District. Is there someone from Elyria Wash Concepts on the call?
Yes, Jason Fenton, Director of Development. How are you?
Good, good. You want to give us some background on this project?
Sure. After speaking with staff and figuring out, there's kind of a, gives you the flavor, the tenor of our redevelopment. It is, consists of the old BP that's now a car dealership. And the parcel in the rear, which is the parcel that needs to be rezoned to the B Automotive, BAO. Then would, we will get a lot consolidation moving forward, but this would allow our use to cover that parcel. You could see there in the slide, kind of where it is in relation to 90 and Lorraine Boulevard. If you want to slide down a little bit more. So there's the old, and then that would be the proposed there. The new, our building's roughly 3,700 square feet. You could see the queuing, and it comes in the back through the tunnel, which is about 120-foot tunnel. And then comes back out on the Griswold there. So the rezoning would allow our use to span both parcels.
Okay, I was gonna ask Ren to pull up a map to see, but I'm getting somewhat familiar with where this is located. But I'm still trying to pull a map up, just so we can.
Right there, right there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, for some reason, that doesn't help me.
It's on the side over by the, where the old closed McDonald's is, if that gives you any reference off of Griswold.
The Arby's used to be there, Mayor.
Oh, it's Downmore.
Downmore, but that's the, that's the.
Ren, can you pull up that address on the map, please? Alright, so as Ren is pulling that up, staff report. Mr. Farkas, Building Official, Zoning Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. The request, the proponent is requesting the parcels listed herein be rezoned from Business Neighborhood. To Business Automotive Oriented District to accommodate a proposed car wash. Findings, address 621 49th Street, parcel number 0624032103-036. And address 620 Griswold, parcel number 0624032103-038. The proposed car wash was preliminary plan submitted indicates the incorporation of two parcels of land. Listed herein, the parcel's last three digits, 038, are currently zoned Business Automotive Oriented District. I have listed the zoning requirements for each district for the board's use in effort to clarifying the purpose of the specific zoning classifications. BN, Business Neighborhood District, the requirement to which can be found in the Elyria Codified Ordinance, Chapter 1156. It is the purpose of a Business Neighborhood District to permit and encourage the establishment of small convenience businesses, personal service businesses located in close proximity to residential areas. Which they are serving. The location of the Business Neighborhood District and nature of the limited commercial activity. Should be developed to avoid traffic congestion for the surrounding residential neighborhood area. Principally permitted uses are childcare facilities, clubs, educational institutions, financial institutions. Neighborhood retail business, non-commercial recreation, offices, personal services. Religious places of worship, restaurants, provided the seating capacity is limited to no more than 20 people. And any other use determined by the building inspector to be of the same general character as the above permitted uses. Business Automotive. Business Automotive Oriented District, the requirement to which can be found in the Elyria Codified Ordinance, Section 1162. The purpose of which is to accommodate and encourage those businesses established are offering accommodations, services, and goods to the public. The Business Automotive Oriented District is most appropriately located adjacent to freeways, interchanges, intersections, and major thoroughfares. The principally permitted uses include automotive filling station, automotive repair, services, automotive sales, convenience businesses, drive-in facilities, fast food restaurants. Off-premise sized restaurants, et cetera. Findings continued. Per the Elyria Codified Ordinance definition, Section 1125.62.1. Defines a car wash as a motor vehicle cleaning facility. Of which specifically means a facility whose sole purpose is either to manually or automatically operate. Is to clean the interior or exterior of automobiles, vans, trucks, except truck tractors and any other commercially licensed vehicle over one-ton capacity. As proposed car wash with, is next akin to a drive-in facility. The proposed use meets the intent of the code as indicated. Staff recommendations. It should be noted, the proposed used car wash is indicated to cross over and be incorporated into parcel number 0624032103-038. A lot consolidation is needed, as this will establish one new parcel and address are assigned to the site. It should also be noted, the request is for a rezoning of the parcels only and does not include any other zoning review. Governing setbacks, structure heights, parking, screening regulations, dumpsters, signs, and possible variances needed, et cetera. The above information complies with the spirit and intent of the zoning code and also maintains the integrity of the abutting zoning districts. In closing, I am in favor of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Farkas. Any questions from the committee on this? Thank you. I got a much better understanding now. It's across the street from Bigby. If you had just said Bigby, I would've got it. So I understand totally now. Any questions from the committee? And I think Mr. Farkas alluded to that when it comes time for. You know, there will be another process of design review. This will come back to us again once we get to that phase. But this is just to allow this area to be zoned for this sort of use. Alright, are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? Alright, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request to rezone the said parcels.
Make it subject to the lot consolidation, which obviously the owner doesn't object to.
Subject to the lot consolidation.
Is that okay, Chad?
Let me finish reading off the request. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the rezon for the said parcels. Parcels from Business Neighborhood District to Business Automotive District, subject to a lot consolidation.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Aiden.
Second, Schneider.
By Mr. Schneider. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. And were there any abstentions? Alright, motion carries. Good luck. Jason.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is Dominic and Courtney Price. And this is for, request for a conditional use permit for the use of a Type A in-home childcare program. Hi, Ms. Courtney, you want to share some information about this project?
Hello, just briefly, I have been in the childcare business for the last two years. The most recent two years, we reside, we were residing in Lorraine County, I mean, not in the city of Lorraine. Which they do not require for us to zone to operate as a childcare home. We just most recently moved to Elyria where I learned, where I called Mr. Farkas and requested zoning information is where I learned that we had to. Apply for a conditional use permit to operate our home as a Type B as well as a Type A. So my goal is to expand to a Type A so that I can hold the capacity of more than six children at one time. I do want to request that, per the note that was sent in the email with the information reviewed. That this scenario be viewed as a childcare home and not childcare facility when considering the square footage of the current lot in the side and front setbacks.
Thank you. Mr. Farkas.
Thank you, Mayor. The request, the proponent is requesting a conditional use to accommodate a proposed Type A childcare facility. Note, this site is currently being utilized as a Type B childcare facility prior to approvals. Staff findings, the site is currently zoned Residential Medium Density District, the requirement to which can be located in Chapter 1144 of the Elyria Codified Ordinance. It is the purpose of a residential medium density district to establish and maintain a high-quality areas within the city for homes. With a median population density to preserve the existing residential neighborhoods characterized by single household residences. The principally permitted uses are as follows. Agricultural, provided that such use is limited to non-commercial farming of crops and non-commercial animal husbandry. Educational institutions, non-commercial recreation, religious places of worship, and single household detached dwelling units. RMD conditionally permitted uses. Section 1144.04.
Daryl, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I just, are you about to read both of these paragraphs?
I'm going to go through what is conditionally permitted. Yes.
And both conditionally, this RMD and the next paragraph. You're about to just read all this?
Yes.
Alright, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to spend everybody's time on this.
Mayor, because you have the general public out there, I think you have.
These documents have been provided.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, that's why I don't want to just reask if folks are prepared or not. If we could kind of go to the, you know, summary of your recommendation and. Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. I'll just jump down to the basics with the board's permission. You have obviously read the requirements of what's permitted. The standards that have to be met to allow conditional use. I'll ask the board that they consider each of those to see if the request meets the mark. And in closing, after consideration of the above items, staff recommends the petition be denied due to potential adverse effects of the surrounding residential homes. For the items listed herein. So with that, it may be taken out of context with not all having privy to the previous information that I have written.
Yeah, the expectation is all our commission members have read the materials prior to this meeting. So. Any questions from the commission members, specific question you have from Mr. Farkas about why he's recommending denying? The request?
I have one. Is it a traffic issue?
Mr. Farkas?
Is that question for me or for Mr. Farkas?
For Mr. Farkas.
Okay.
Part of the report does govern traffic concerns. As one of the requirements of the conditionally approval, it says, in order to minimize adverse impact on surrounding residential properties. They should be placed to extent possible for the residential district to avoid any area or major artery. And this is in regards to pickup, drop-off, where people park, where they pull in. It is geared to avoid just that.
Thank you.
Ms. Price, do you want to speak to those concerns? And then, Mr. Hubbard, I'll go to you.
Yes, as I explained in the letter I submitted, we do have staggered pickup and drop-off times. So. Although I do not plan to operate at the capacity of having 12 children at one time, there shouldn't be at any point. Where anyone should have to park on the street or cross the street to be able to pick up and drop off their child successfully. He also mentioned in the review, the extended driveway, which I did email Mary a copy of the 2015 plat map. That showed that drawing on there, but we have an extended driveway that holds more than six cars. So that's also a precaution that I kept in mind before applying for this. So that people that are coming in and out do have a place to park in our property.
So, Mr. Hubbard?
I guess I have a couple of questions. It looks, if I'm looking at the map correctly, this is directly or almost directly off of Ford Road. Is that right?
That is correct.
And just kind of down the street from the old Walmart?
That is correct.
Okay, do you, this would be for either you or perhaps Mr. Farkas. The neighboring properties outside of this development, are they, is that whole area residential? Or are we very close to the edge of a residential commercial boundary?
I can answer that. The current location of Regency Court was specifically geared for residential improvement in mind. The surrounding properties somewhere in township, the nearest location, as you mentioned, would be Walmart, which is of course is a commercial atmosphere. But this particular area is specifically residential.
Okay, and then we're looking at a difference between, under a Type B, we can support up to six children and a Type A would be up to 12? Is that, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, per the definition of the building code, that is where I draw my information for what is a Type A and B, just for the board's use. I mentioned it in my report. To give context of the numbers permitted and the potentiality of children and vehicles per child. Which rolls into my recommendations of location.
And is this going to be a separately? Are you only going to operate the daycare out of this house? Or would the idea be both that you live in the house and that you operate basically a daycare out of your home?
It'll be, wait, can you restate that question?
I guess my question is, are we talking about a separate daycare that's in a residential community? Or is this a daycare that you operate out of your house, that you're living in as well?
This is a daycare that I operate in, outside of, out of my house. I mean, not outside, out of my house. I have a fully finished basement that I use. And I have a separate entry that goes out, comes in and goes out of the side of the house that is exclusively for the daycare. That goes down into the basement.
And I have a question for Mr. Farkas. How have we handled daycares, other daycares in the city, in-home daycares?
Oh, I'm not muted. Typically, when these come in, a special inspection request is submitted. To see if it meets the marks of all the zoning requirements. Typically, most do not due to the regiments required as listed in my report. It's very difficult to establish these. Most commonly, these are placed in a commercial atmosphere due to the specific requirements of the zoning. And as in residential, it's not saying you can't do it. It's just saying you have to meet very specific criteria. As mentioned in my report, that hits substantially the mark of what is needed to do this.
So I guess I'm referring to the ones that currently exist in the city.
I will leave that to Mr. Mandoke if he's on, as he typically governs these as part of the state requirement inspections from a fire department standpoint. A lot of these are existing non-conforming. That may have been put in prior to any type of approval process.
I was gonna say, to my knowledge, there's only one other Type A. So I don't know if that speaks to that question at all, but I didn't even think that this was a common thing that people went for because there was only one.
Where's that at, Courtney, if I may ask? The one you referred?
I believe it's on Oberlin Avenue. It's a home. I don't know the lady's personal information. I just know from, in the childcare community, we can do a childcare search. And so one day I just searched the list for other Type As in the city of Elyria, and there was only one.
Okay, is that a commercial facility or a residential home?
It's, it's a residential home. And my apologies, I said Oberlin Avenue. It's actually Oberlin, Oberlin Road.
Oh, okay, okay. It didn't ring a bell. I just, thank you. I just.
My apologies.
No, no.
This is Battle. Can I ask a question?
Please.
Is there, have there been an inspection, daycare from the Ohio Department of Job and Families or anything like that for a Type A?
Or a Type A, no. In order for us to, to apply for a Type A license, we have to do all of this first. We have to request zoning information first. We have to have fire marshal visit first, and we also have to have the building official letters first before we can even submit an application. And then, once we submit an application and pay the fee for re-application of license, then they come in and check your household.
When you say "they," the Ohio Department of Job Services?
My apologies.
Okay. And now, another question I have, will you have volunteers or any type of staffing if you go beyond six?
Yes, the state requires for us to have an additional staff if we have more than seven.
Okay, do you do background checks on staffing and volunteers?
Yes, it is state required. I usually don't use volunteers, but as a state requirement, we have to, for hiring staff, we have to have each person FBI and BCI background checked. We also have to have them current on all health and safety trainings prior to them being able to be around the children.
And what is the age group that you really deal with in daycare?
From birth to about four, right now, four, because of schools and other facilities being closed due to COVID. Usually around the early preschool ages where I kind of stop. I don't make that a cutoff limit, but for the main. Time of the day, during the day, eight to five period, is usually birth to about age of four. Other times, if I have afternoon or evening care, or even weekend care, of course, those go into older ages. The state allows us to keep children up to the age of 12. However, I haven't gotten any children that, that old yet. But they do allow us to keep children up to the age of 12.
Will you do any transportation with those kids or the parks is down the street there? Would you do anything like that?
I don't plan to, because my vehicle does not allow me to probably transport more than three children at this time. My license does give me capacity to, because I, when in Lorraine, I did back and forth school transportation. But now that we have relocated and things are different due to COVID requirements, I will not be transporting anybody anywhere.
Thank you for that, Mr. Battle. So, so Mr. Farkas, I just want to kind of summarize and see if I'm correct in some of the concerns. So when I look at your recommendations, some of the concerns you have, where it's around lot size, frontage. If I was to summarize those things, are those concerns related to? I don't even know. So can you tell me, what, if you were to summarize what those concerns are, when it comes to the lot frontage and setbacks, what is the, what is the concern with those things?
The, the recommendation on page two, number one, for instance, the minimum lot area shall be 30,000 square feet. And the current lot size is 13,703. The concern there is just general square footage. Kids like to run. There's an insulation factor to protect and keep them away from any type of danger. And that gives them for playing ball and just being a general kid, is my interpretation of that. Number two.
So, Mr. Farkas, I'll speak to that one first. My understanding, though, is that, to Mr. Battle's question. Those sort of dynamics are governed by the state of Ohio to make sure the kids are in a healthy environment to learn in. That, there's a whole body that controls it. If they would, they wouldn't even approve for her to have children in the space if it wasn't conducive to that. And that, there's a whole body that controls it. If, if they would, they wouldn't even approve for her to have children in the space if it wasn't conducive to that.
I would agree with that. That is their aspect. From a zoning standpoint, this is what we're, we have.
Yeah, I'm just saying, as, as the professionals that, that are hired by the state to focus on kid health and wellbeing.
Agreed. Total different animal. I totally.
What other, what other concerns do we have in you?
Um, the, our code requires that the lot frontage be a hundred and seventy-five feet. The current lot frontage now is about a hundred and thirty-two on one street and a hundred feet on the other. That again is just to provide more buffer. Anything, parking, uh, if they decide to set up play materials or an, an area for the kids to be in a controlled environment. That is geared to allow that space to do so.
Okay.
Um, the, the, again, the building setbacks, I'm not going to read the next couple because they're, they're just the same idea. Um, the parking setback is again to insulate the adjoining neighbors. So when vehicles come in and out, um, to pick up children, drop off children, it doesn't become some kind of a nuisance. I, I don't know the hours of operation. Um, if people are concerned, they would say, hey, you know, the, the, how come there's so many cars parked in the driveway all at once? I'm not there during the operation hours, but that is what the zoning code intent is to kind of fish, uh, fish out, to say what's the code looking for.
And just a second, Ms. Price, can you speak to that again on terms of like how you mentioned that there's a limitation on the number of children? And, and so can you speak to that concern around traffic congestion?
Yes, um, I did, in, in concern of my adjoining and adjacent neighbors. I did go around and talk with them about what I was planning to do and I did get signatures, um, basically stating that they didn't have any. They didn't feel it would be any effect on them. I did email that to Mary. But my plan for that is again, uh, drop off, pickup and drop off times are staggered. Everyone does not arrive at the same time every day. Uh, my current operating hours are twenty-four hours, although I don't have children that, all of those times. Each case is based off of the parent's working schedule. So with that being said, going for a new license, those things will potentially change. Um, however, with parking, like I said, I have, uh, ample amount of parking for people to come in and out. As well as pickup and drop off times being staggered. So there shouldn't be for the maximum of twelve children, although three and four children sometimes are to one family. Um, there shouldn't be an influx of parking. Now, there will be an influx of traffics as far as in and out. But our house is the first house on the street, so, um, with the concern of people being in and out of our property. Or our driveway, other than that, it shouldn't pose an effect or threat to our neighbors.
Yes, and, uh, any other questions from the committee members?
Uh, I just have, I have one.
Got Derek, Tom, and then Don, or Tom, Derek, and Don. Go ahead, Tom.
Uh, so is there a variance required for a class B?
I think Mr. Parkus, uh, told me that there was. Could you answer that, Mr. Parkus?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, as again, the way the ordinance is written, it pretty much limits what's permitted from a daycare. It, it wants to provide ample space and most residential homes just don't meet the bill. Because a lot of these requirements, as listed in my report, uh, would be pretty hard to meet. So, in this particular use, it's already there. Yes, it should have gone through the conditional process as we are now for that use. But now we're here for the, a different use for a proposed increase up to, I think it was, um, is it sixteen children?
No.
All children.
Yes.
Twelve.
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 Uh, may I note that the state requires for us to receive a fire, our, fire marshal and building inspection. Which they are able to tell me what capacity I can keep children based off of the thirty-six square feet per child rule.
Carl, do you want to speak to that?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, the, the, the question is, is, uh, yes, the fire department conducts, uh, the first initial inspection. In a municipal, uh, state fire marshal would do it outside municipal, but in Aleria, the Aleria Fire Department conducts the initial. And we can, uh, determine type B or type A, um, recommendations for the Department of Job and Family Services. We would have, we have appendices with all the requirements that would direct us, um. And let us, uh, determine that kind of thing. And then thereafter, we do annual inspections and they're, they're required to have those annual inspections. Um, to get their license from the Department of Job and Family Services. So we do conduct those inspections throughout the city of Aleria. Let me just say that most homes are type B in the city of Aleria. Uh, there have been type As that have then have gone to, um. Regular commercial structures because of the number of children. They, they found it to be difficult to have, uh, that many children in a type A in a home. Most of our homes are two to three children or around there. So, um, we do have, we have had type As and then gone into regular buildings, commercial buildings. And then the one on Oberlin Avenue, um, is an older one that's been around for many, many, many years. And, um, right now, I believe it's a type B. It may have been a type A at one time. But now it's, it's only two to three. It's, it's down there by the, uh, the trolley turnaround on Oberlin Avenue. So, uh, I'm just saying that most, uh, home daycares in Aleria have been type Bs historically. And, uh, we do the initial inspection and then we do annual inspections. Our inspectors do them every year in these facilities. There's quite a number of requirements that we go through to make sure they're, they're done right. And we pr- provide our written letter and then the state provides licensure.
Do, do you have any recommendations, uh, Fire Marshal?
Um, I'm just, from historically saying, I have not been at, at, uh, this, uh, requesters home. Uh, historically, homes are, are, in, in the neighborhoods are better for a smaller number of children. But, um, per square footage and per, per the zoning regulations that Daryl's talking about. Um, that, that's comes before we arrive there. And then we take that information from Daryl and use it in our final, uh, evaluation.
Derek and then Don, thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, Mrs. Price.
Yes.
Can, can you tell me how many years' experience you have of running a daycare on your own?
Two years.
Two years in Lorraine before coming here?
Yes.
And, uh, and then, Daryl, can you, uh, can you answer, is there on-street parking? Is it parking on-street, both sides, just one side, or no on-street parking on Regency Court?
Uh, uh, that may be a better question for John to answer, but to my knowledge, that cul-de-sac was created for parking on both sides.
Parking on both sides, alright. So i- i- it, it, it just seems to me that. Staggered drop-offs and pickups with, with two, with both side of the street parkings. Uh, wouldn't seem to be a major traffic issue from my perspective, but, so, uh, thank you, Mrs. Price. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Derek.
Don, did you still have something? Alright.
I, I do. Um, I, I do have some concerns about the lot slot size. Um, and it's, you know, the two frontages and the amount of traffic and the speed at which traffic can go down, um, Ford Road. And I'm just curious to know, it looks like in the pictures, you don't have any fencing or anything like that. Um, and I was just curious if you had any plans to install fencing or, um, what thoughts you have about that?
Yes, my husband and I have been contracted to insert a fence. I have a, a, um, estimate here. But we've been contracted as of December thirtieth.
Um, and then a follow-up question I have is just to confirm, um, with Mr. Parkus. Allowing the conditional use would expire when the property changes hands?
The, the conditional use goes with the home occupancy use. If, uh, Courtney decides to move to another place, the commercial atmosphere is saying, just move out of different city. The use would revert back to the residential medium density district in which it was. That's the beauty of a conditional use. I- it's tagged to this specific area of, uh, involvement.
Thank you. And then lastly, I just wanted to confirm with, uh, Mr. Schneider. Do you foresee any traffic issues in this area, um, if we change the use like this and there's that much in and out?
Well, uh, first of all, I'll just say that, you know, the roadway out there is twenty-eight foot wide. It shouldn't have dual parking on both sides, but it does for some reason. I don't know what the reason why it wasn't signed years ago. But, uh, it is only twenty-eight foot wide. As far as in and out. No, not as far as the, uh, being the first house, I think it'd be easiest to access. I mean, but if everyone came at one time, yes, it could be difficult, uh, because they are right there at the first house. So, uh, it, it's a tough call. I, most of the time I'd say, no, no problem. Uh, could there be a problem once in a while to move? Yeah, could be, but I, I don't see a big issue with, with that. But if, if there were twelve individual children with twelve different pickups, that could be concern.
So, uh, so how's the committee feel about, uh, uh, the approval? And then, and if so, what about, is there certain conditions? I know, Don, you mentioned a fence. Is, is, I don't know, we're allowed to put a condition like that on.
Hello? Where? Mr. Norton, how are you doing?
I'll get him muted. Derek, sorry. Got him muted. But, um, yeah, committee members, is there a motion to approve it and, uh, with the condition?
Well, I'd be curious, are there any, uh, are there any opponents or any of the property?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You're right. You're right. You're, I'm sorry. Are there any other proponents? Are there any other proponents? Any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? And Courtney, you mentioned you got signatures from folks as well. Make sure that gets circulated to, to us as well.
Absolutely. I sent it to Mary via email. Should I send it to someone else?
I will get it from her. We'll get it.
Okay.
Yeah, I got that late yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
It was, um, there was like three or four signatures on it from neighbors that were okay with the project or with the conditional use. Um, I did receive a phone call from another neighbor that had no problem with it.
Okay.
Have we had any, we've had no neighbor complaints? Have we had, just curious, have there been any neighbor complaints about this?
I have not gotten any.
Not to my knowledge, no.
Okay, thank you.
So Chad, Derek, Derek, you seem like you're at a place that you want to make a motion to approve with any conditions or, yeah?
Uh, I, I'd be happy to make a motion for approval.
Okay, is there a second?
I, I personally think that it shouldn't be, uh, any, uh, larger than a B.
Okay, that's fair. Uh, is there a second though? Is there a second? Then we'll put it back up for discussion. Is there a second?
I, I would second the vote, yes.
Uh, second, my Mr. Right. Discussion, now, Mr. Aiden, you said, uh, you, you're in favor of it, uh, staying as a B?
As a B.
Yep, yep. Any other discussion, any other points? And again, I like the conditional use side because to the point of if she, once she leaves, it reverts back. And, you know, we can be working closely with them to make sure that, you know, that, you know, they're compliant with these other pieces in terms of the fence and things like that.
Uh, should, should this be? Should, could I have a question here?
Yes, Mr. Battle, please.
Uh, should this be pending Ohio Department of Job Family Services inspection for twelve?
Well, I think to Mrs. Price's point, they won't do the inspection unless this is approved. Is it, was that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so I think there's other checkpoints that if she doesn't, if we pass this, she's still got to pass through a couple of other hurdles before she gets up.
But the Ohio Department, they come in every so often too, also, right?
Yeah, so I, if we approve this, then they'll come in and check. And if they don't approve it, then she doesn't move forward.
Absolutely.
So we don't have to worry about that traffic and, and, and we don't have to worry about the traffic and fencing and the exit doors and all that, because that's what they look for.
That's what they're going to look for.
Right.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, Mr. Schneider.
I have a question for Mrs. Price. When you, when you approached the neighbors and received signatures that were in favor. Was it for the type A or for the type B that you informed them of?
It was for the type A. Um, I went based off of Mr. Parkus's review, um, and his motion to deny. So I addressed them then and explained what I was trying to do. And I tried to address any adverse effects that could be on them, which were, the ones I thought of were the parking and the children at play. And so I let them know, just like I let you guys know today about the plan for parking as well as the contract for fence.
Okay, and it looks like, you know, and I don't know if more of the properties that were used as type B in the city. This home has two basement entrances, correct?
Yes.
Which, I mean, if it didn't have two basement entrances, would we be more apt to say B over A? I'm just talking at this point, with it being an A and you having two entrance points, points to your basement. Um, that, I think that does help because you have two egresses out, you know, to get out of the property from the basement.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Uh, for, uh, Mrs. Price, the, the, the neighbors that you talked to express any concerns? I, I know you said you kind of discussed the, that with them, but they, did they seem to have any concerns as far as you recall?
No, none of them had any concerns. I can read the letter if need be, but, um, I opened the discussion, of course, for any concerns. And the only, they would only sign this letter if they didn't have any concerns. So I have the signatures of the people who are new, under new construction right next door to me. The signature of the woman who lives behind me and the signature of those who live directly across the street from me.
And I'll make sure we get that forwarded to the rest of the committee as well. Any other discussion? Alright, hearing none. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Again, are we in favor of the class A? Is that, because we had a?
I'm sorry, yeah. So this is a motion to approve a conditional use type A, uh, for, as, for the said property. And so it's been, uh, we can redo it. Motion by, is, can I have a motion for that?
So moved?
Move by Mr. Ted, though. Is there a second? Second. Second by Mr. Hubbard. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
One nay, Mr. Aiden, and were there any abstentions? Alright, motion carries. Alright, good luck, Ms. Price.
Thank you.
Alright, so there's, uh, last but not least, and thank you for your patience. And so this is, this is the, this is the exciting part. I hope that's the exciting part. Yes, we're at the exciting part of the agenda. Um, uh, discussing Midway Mall. We, we, we have some changes that we're going to propose to the agenda. Uh, but we're going to start with, um, you know, getting our partners here, uh, of ICP, the team from ICP. Um, so again, this is really, um, I'm really excited about this conversation and then, you know, this vote. Because we're going to be discussing the redevelopment of Midway Mall, which for many of us, this is something that's near and dear to us. Um, that we want to see for the city ushering in this new wave of development to Midway Mall. So I'm going to pass it over to the folks at ICP to kind of share a little bit about their company, what they have at stake right now. And then we'll go, uh, specifically into their zoning requests. So, Mr. Salata?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Uh, good morning or good afternoon now, almost afternoon now to everybody. Um, thanks for having us today. My name's Chris Salata. I'm the chief operating officer for industrial commercial properties. Uh, I'm joined today by our senior vice president of development, Jeff Martin, and by our land use council, Jordan Burns. Um, we, as, as you may know, um, we have, uh, for the last almost, almost two years now. Owned the former Sears Building and the former Dillard's Building at Midway Mall. Uh, we have been in, um, I'll, I'll say, um, tough negotiations with the current owner of the interior mall. Uh, going on almost a year now, um, but those have continued to make great progress. And we've continued to work closely with the mayor, uh, and Dawn and her team and his team. Um, as we've started to market the site for a potential redevelopment. ICP is a twenty-five-year-old, uh, real estate development firm. Um, we own forty-two million square feet of space in four states. We have over three hundred tenants in our portfolios and about a hundred fifty buildings. Uh, locally, we're probably most known for our redevelopment of, uh, Randall Park Mall, which many of you, you may be familiar with. Uh, we acquired that mall, uh, in seven to eight different acquisitions over the course of six years. Uh, and ultimately drove, uh, the redevelopment of an Amazon fulfillment center there. Um, but also maintained the existing Sears Building and redeveloped that into an industrial use. So we, we currently have at that Sears Building, four different industrial tenants, uh, that operate out of that building. We have done six deals with Sears and what we found is in our, is our line of work, these Sears buildings, um, really set themselves up well. For industrial redevelopment for a variety of reasons. One, it's got typically, it's located, you know, at a, at a mall location like this that has all of the heavy utility infrastructure you would need. One, it's got typically, it's located, you know, at a at a mall location like this that has all of the heavy utility infrastructure you would need. It's got access and visibility, which is important to a lot of these logistics providers. And it also has the 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 bones of a of a building that suits itself well for industrial use. Um we've been talking to the mayor about an overall redevelopment of this particular site, Midway Mall site. That could incorporate some light industrial uses. We think, given its location as kind of the gateway, uh the western gateway to Cleveland, to the greater Cleveland area. Its location between I eighty and I ninety, um and in the recent surge and boom of e-commerce. And all of the uh the distribution that we've all seen, especially in the wake of the COVID pandemic. Um there are gonna, there is gonna be a lot of demand and interest in this particular location um for that type of use. Um we have continued to market the Sears sites uh over the last couple of years. We've talked to retailers, we've talked to self-storage. We've talked to industrial users. And we believe that the first thing you do at one of these redevelopments is really the most important thing you do. And that isn't, that's never more relevant than just looking down the road at Randall. Um there at Randall, we actually redeveloped the Sears building prior to landing Amazon. And what that did for us, everyone, is that actually signified to the market and specifically to Amazon. The nature of this particular piece of property was changing. And that the community in which it resided, being the Village North Randall, was open to these new uses, this new economic development. And of course, the new job creation coming to that location. And so what we did there is we started with that Sears redevelopment, and low and behold, that led to future discussions with Amazon, which then led to the fulfillment center. That now includes over three thousand employees working at that site. And a a handsome check that goes to Mayor Smith every month that uh I'm, I I won't disclose today, but it's it's a lot more than he was getting before. Uh with the dead mall, so um I think the way that we envision this particular site is very similar to our approach at Randall. And that is, we have to get the first project here right in order to kick this redevelopment off. And so I guess we're we're here today to talk about a prospect for that first project. Um specifically, a user for the Sears. This is a a third-party logistics provider. So in our, in our business, we typically refer to them as three PLs. But this is a a logistics provider that houses and ships uh products for a variety of businesses. Um they're, one of their biggest uh clients is actually Walmart. This is a a user that is, has multiple locations in and around the northeast Ohio market. And they have identified Alaria as a location that they would like to be. Uh we are currently competing with one other location for their business. And what they have told us is that, given the current zoning here, uh they're not able to move forward um with with their project. That said, if we're able to find a way to uh accommodate their use here. They have told us that this is their preferred location and they can move immediately to lease negotiations, which would. Commit them to a long-term commitment to the city of Alaria and Lor- and Lorain County. And most importantly, I think, as we look at the larger redevelopment of the mall, they would, they would be the catalyst, we believe. To to start this larger redevelopment and uh and kick off what we believe is gonna be, can be a fantastic redevelopment of the site. So I I think this is something that we've done, this is what we do. Um we are, we are redevelopment experts. Um adaptive reuse of existing buildings is really our bread and butter. Whether it be a former retail location, whether it be a former um automotive plant. We've redeveloped half a dozen former GM and Ford plants throughout the states of Ohio and Michigan. Um and we've done quite a bit of retail conversion. Um I think everybody on this call would acknowledge that, you know, the retail market at this particular site. Has obviously changed dramatically over the years. Uh most recently, J C Penney left the mall, Best Buy left the mall. And while I, while I don't think that retail at this location is dead, I do think that it has, the the demand has has decreased significantly. I think there's still an opportunity for retail and restaurants and that kind of uh, those kind of uses. To operate in conjunction with an industrial redevelopment. What industrial redevelopment has, we've seen do for other former mall locations is that it drives daytime population. Which in turn helps those retailers, helps those restaurants. We've seen that exact same phenomenon play out at Randall. In addition to developing the, redeveloping the Sears, we've developed a uh a Taco Bell there on an out parcel. We also took down the former Holiday Inn, which was on the corner across from the Racino, the Jack Racino. We're getting a ton of interest there from potential retailers and restaurants that wanna be next to these industrial users. Because of the employment and because of that daytime population. So w- we do view this as kind of a win-win uh on adult, on a bunch of different fronts. Um but we believe that the nature of this particular location unfortunately has drifted away from retail. And this particular asset class right now presents the best use uh for the, for this particular site.
Thank you, Chris, and this specific request they have today is to rezone the parcels. Um oh six four zero three one one zero seven oh four two and zero six two four. Zero three zero uh zero 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 one three five, located at forty-nine hundred and forty-nine fifty. Midway Mall, Alaria, Ohio, from a business general district to a light industrial district. So that is what we'll be uh voting on and discussing today. Um and so um staff, Mister Farkas, you wanna give your staff report?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh for clarity regarding the parcels, the application submitted. Uh indicated that only two parcels of interest were uh to be on the agenda. I'm unaware of these additional parcels, so my report will be.
That was two, that was two parcels, Mister Farkas.
Okay, then my report will be specifically geared to those two, so I know there was other parcels involved, so please excuse my uh uh confusion. The request, the proponent is requesting parcel zero six dash two four dash oh three one dash one oh seven and dash oh four two. Forty-nine hundred midway and parcel zero six dash two four dash zero three zero dash zero zero zero. Dash one three five four nine fifty midway be rezoned from a business general district to a light industrial district. The zoning, the rezoning is to accommodate a proposed warehouse and trucking facility. Findings, um I'll briefly skim through the business general requirements as is in my previous reports, they're unchanged. It just goes into the requirements of what's permitted in a business general, pretty much what was there now, retail. Um I'll zip right to the light industrial to expedite. Uh the requirements of a light industrial can be found in the Alaria Codified Ordinance, section eleven sixty-four. The purpose of a light industrial district is to accommodate and encourage development of light industrial uses, which operate within enclosed structures. Clean and quiet, free of hazardous or eject- objectable elements such as noise, odor, dust, smoke, glare, or vibration. For section eleven sixty-four oh two, precisely permitted uses, the Alaria Codified Ordinances permit automotive repair, building materials, related trade. Cellular communication sites, contract construction services, light manufacturing and storage, lock and store warehouses, off-premise science, printing, publishing. Public utility yards, research and development laboratories, truck terminals, and warehousing, wholesale business, et cetera. Staff findings continue. Note, for section eleven twenty-five point sixty-one definition section, as on my report. Of the Alaria Codified Ordinance, light manufacturing and storage means the assembling, altering, fabricating, finishing. Or processing or treatment or storage of a product. Staff recommendations, this site is primarily comprised of business general district. Of which consists of multiple diverse establishments in and around the area. The board must consider how proposals such as this will maintain the integrity of the budding zoning district. I have attached a map for the board's use, so they can see what's around, and efforts of avoiding spot zoning. And a pre-established business general district. If approved, the new zoning classification would permit exterior and interior storage and any other permitted light industrial use. As described in herein, based on the information provided. Um with this information, I would not be in favor of the request. Now, this report was prepared uh prior to some information being brought to my attention of the potential future. O- overlay requirements for the entire mall. I have come to my uh attention that the proponent is uh willing to abide by the requirements of any overlay if implemented. And the restrictions herein. With that in mind, I would change my report to a more favorable response. Because it would allow us some limitations of what would be permitted in this pre-established business general district.
Thank you, Mister Farkas. So just in summary, one of the major concerns that we had as a city and the staff was uh outdoor storage. Uh with light industrial, it really could open up the door for um, you know, salt. You know, big rocks being stored in the parking lot and things like that. Though we trust this this uh this uh partner. Uh if that's not what they're looking for, it's still with that zoning being there, that would be a concern. And so uh we talked with the developers uh about would they be willingly um uh voluntarily offer up. To not have that as a usage on the deed and have a deed restriction that that would not be allowed. Um and then internally, we would create a process that if anyone uh wanted to use outdoor storage. They would have to come back to us for approval uh to to determine if we felt it was uh acceptable to have that sort of outdoor storage. So um and I, Chris, I'll let you respond to some of the concerns and then that as well.
Yeah, as as we talked about with with the mayor, um outdoor storage can be sometimes an ancillary use to some light uh industrial users. As you can imagine, w- we don't, we don't plan on uh pursuing any, and by the way, the user that's that's at the table right now. Is not someone that uh isn't, is a storage yard per se. Now, whether that means they might have a trailer or two that hooks up to the loading docks where they store things in, that's a possibility. That might be a necess- a necessity, I should say, to their business. Whether or not, you know, where the, let's talk about kind of where the existing Sears loading docks are. If at times they may have empty pallets located out there, absolutely, that's probably part of their business. But to the mayor's point about, you know, rock piles and salt and and materials of that nature, that's not the type of user that this is. Um I I would like to ask the commission if they would consider, um and especially as we move forward into the overlay. And it's something we've talked about uh with other, other members of the commission already. Considering including outdoor storage, should it comply with, you know, screen, proper screening requirements? That this commission would have the ability to review and approve. Um I think in the, Jordan, you can correct me if I'm speaking out of term, but I think in the current code, the city's current code. There are some provisions uh that speak to that type of uh process as it relates to outdoor storage, correct?
Yeah, there there are, there's at least one other zoning district in the city where outdoor storage is allowed. Provided that um uh it's screened um from view, and and I'm reading now. Um by a wall or uh of material similar to and compatible with that of the building or buildings on the site. Or be suitably screened by a fence or dense landscaping, so that such storage areas are not visible from neighboring sites. Lots, common areas, or public roads, streets, or rights of way. Um and that's, that that's what we've discussed um uh before today. Um for consideration in connection with the overlay district that that the uh planning commission is is being asked to consider. We understand that's a separate discussion and 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 that that um that you'll discuss those specifics. Um later on, but for purposes of um of this rezoning request. We're certainly willing to abide by those same limitations. We're we're, a- as as Chris described, this is the first step in in a much larger scale redevelopment. Of the mall property, and w- we have no interest or desire in um devaluing. Um the asset and 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 undermining the redevelopment that Chris has described. By um by uh attracting and allowing the sort of um open outdoor storage. Um that the building commissioner has has concerns over. We 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 would, we would share those same concerns. Um but but a a a blanket prohibition um with respect to to this site. Really would, as Chris described, um uh limit, limit the ability for for the industrial tenants. That that we try and attract to sites like this from conducting their business. Um and and that's, that's, that's the last thing we want to do, and hopefully that's the last thing that 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 this planning commission wants to do as part of this. So we we think the the better course of action, certainly with regard to the the former Sears property. Is the kind of limitation on any outdoor storage that I just read from the code. Um that that gives, gives the city protection against um the the adverse impact on the. Um the adjacent and surrounding properties that 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 it really um needs. And still gives our our industrial tenants the ability to to function as as you'd expect they would. Using using at least some outdoor storage, but making sure that they do it in a manner that uh that that keeps the site attractive. Um both within and without.
I think that's consistent, once again, not to go back to Randall, but it's, the more we, the more we look at the two sites, it's, the more apples to apples. It it really becomes, especially with the Sears here at play. Um that former Sears, there is one tenant in that building that has outdoor storage. That outdoor storage is properly screened, it does front on a road, but it's been properly screened. Um to the, to the village's satisfaction, and that was something we had to go back in and and they had the final approval rights on it. Um and that's, I guess, that's the exact path that we would, we would hope to go down here with Alaria.
And 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 Chris was saying that, can you talk a little bit more about how you, you said you had to go back to the village to get that approval for that?
So there was a site, site plan, I mean, within the zoning context, those restrictions that Jordan referenced. We would have to come back in for a site plan approval, which would then be subject to this commission's review and and sign off. Um now, what I'm, what I can tell you right now is this particular user at multiple other locations, they don't have any outdoor storage. So it may, it may be a moot point with this group. If they, if they, they do have at a couple locations, a very small amount, as I talked about, and it's really limited to, you know. Occasional empty pallets, but it's not, it's not materials, as I think uh Mister Farkas was referencing. And the concerns, Mayor, that you've referenced as it relates to rocks or metal or steel or things like that.
Any, any questions from the committee?
Uh yes, I have a question.
Yes.
Um you indicated, I believe, that uh some neighboring property or you've been in negotiations with the owner of the mall proper. How does, how would this impact the existing kind of retail structure, especially considering the fact that Sears is attached? You know, it's not quite a neighboring, I understand it's a neighboring parcel, but it shares some common corridors and those sort of things. Or at least has in the past, and I'm just curious how that would work moving forward if we only rezone a portion of this.
Right, so that's a great question. Um currently, as it, as it stands, those access points to the mall are no longer. Um in place, uh somebody's pulling up a site plan here. Those access points are already closed off at this point, and the, and the parcel itself is kind of operated separately from the mall since Sears left. Um the loading is actually located in a location on the south side of the building that is away from the front retail entrance. All the utilities are already um separately metered um and come to this building. Um the hope would be, as we proceed with the negotiations with the owner of the interior mall. That um parts of that mall would would be demolished and parts would be actually uh redeveloped. So we could use the existing structure of the mall in many instances to redevelop uh into different uses. Whether that be industrial or office or other commercial uses. Um our plan would be to take down as little of the existing mall as we can. Um because we we've just found, one, it's, it's much, it's a much quicker process to redevelop an existing site than it is to. To demo the whole thing and start over. Now that said, if a big whale like, you know, that big e-commerce group came along here and wanted to be here. Well, then it would make sense for everybody to take it down and let them do their thing. But um our plan initially would be to redevelop some of the, as much of the existing structures as possible. So as we would redevelop the Sears, to answer your question, we would keep that in mind. Um and make sure that the loading, the access, all of that was set up such that should that whole retail strip remain on Midway Mall Boulevard. That there wouldn't be any disruption to that, and also that it could lend itself to redevelopment of that at a future date.
Other questions from committee members?
And I, actually, I should say, Mayor, what's important about this particular user is they would commit to take a large portion of the first floor of the space. Right out of the gate with uh hopes that they could grow their business into the the second floor. Um as many of you, I'm sure, can appreciate leasing second floor space in any location is difficult. And so if you have a a user that has plans for growth and can stay within that same building. Um that's another huge benefit to working with this particular user, is that they do have uh plans. that they do have, uh, plans and hopes to grow into potentially all of that space.
I have a question. Is there any intention on using the detached structure, which would be what was formerly the auto center?
Auto center would not be associated with this particular user. We would, we would continue to pursue other uses for that building.
Thank you.
And Mr. Salata, uh, I had a question. In, in comparison to the Randall Park, that was, uh, the Randall Park location, what is, what is the, is the square footage of, of, of our Sears versus their Sears, uh, is it about the same?
Pretty, pretty darn close. You know, the big difference, I would tell you, between this and Randall is, if you've ever been out to Randall, the Sears at Randall, you can actually enter at two levels. Um, so it's, it's built in, you can enter the second level on grade, it's built into the hill. So you can enter the, you can enter the second level on grade, which candidly made that a little bit easier to redevelop, uh, into multi-tenant, because you had two separate, essentially, you had two separate entrances and you had two separate loading, uh, areas. Here, we got a traditional two-story, you know, uh, bomb shelter, like Sears used to build them. And this is an all-concrete building, it's, it's, the, the building itself is, the infrastructure, the bones of it are in great condition. It already has loading, as Sears, you know, obviously utilized that as part of their operations, large freight elevators, plenty of power. So, once again, those are a bunch of the characteristics that lend itself to, to these types of industrial users right out of the gate.
Yeah, my, uh, I, I, I was hoping you would say that, hopefully, if, if this gets approved, uh, we can, the Sears can support the same capacity that you're doing at Randall Park would be ideal, you know, especially for this community.
I, ideal, I, I, ideal redevelopment of this would be to fill the entire building potentially with another user.
Sure. Thank you.
Yep.
Other, other committee members?
Yeah, this is a, uh, Tom, I would think that we should be looking at the overall overlay district instead of just spot zoning, just one.
Yeah, so.
It just seems to make more sense to me than just doing a spot zoning, but.
Yeah, I can speak to that. So, um, you know, the original goal was to have the overlay, um, uh, district piece on the agenda, however, right now, currently, we don't have anything in code to be able to do an overlay. So a part of what we'll be discussing after this is like, how do we now build an infrastructure within the city, uh, so that we can have an overlay district, so that we can kind of handle broader projects and not just one individual parcel, but us as a commission can recommend multiple parcels, but right now in the code, that doesn't exist. So that'll be a part of the discussion right after this.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, maybe I can speak to that, too. I mean, I, the urgency as it relates to the Sears is directly related to this particular user. Um, if we didn't have this user at the table right now, I think we could all be a little bit more patient on the overlay, but i- in an effort to get this user in, and as I said, kind of serve as a catalyst for the larger redevelopment, that's why we're, we've approached you on the, uh, the individual rezone. Now that said, we think the individual rezone of this, of these couple of parcels, when you hold it up against the, the proposed overlay, um, is consistent, is consistent with the, uh, the, the overlay and, and should be able to be blend, blended in. You know, it's not like we're gonna have a, you know, a, a totally different use here that's not consistent with what the overlay would contemplate, so. Try to take advantage of, trying to take advantage of timing here.
Yeah, no doubt, no doubt.
Right.
Any other?
I have one other question, Mr. Mayor.
Please, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Mr. Aiden, please.
Okay, uh, so if we're trying to be urgent, is a conditional use good? Uh, is that something that we could utilize until the overlay district's in place?
And because, Mr. Farkas?
Uh, yeah, I can speak to that, Tom. Uh, unfortunately, there is nothing in place that triggers a conditional use for a particular, uh, atmosphere of what's proposed. Um, as far as a, other options, we're trying to create this overlay district that would give some flexibility, but yet maintain the integrity of the overall district. It's encouraging to see the, the response of the proponent, the willingness to say, yes, we're willing to do this, we're willing to do that. My initial report was governed strictly on, as you said, Tom, a spot zoning, of which quintessentially it would technically be if we were just to singularly focus on this one project, which we're not. So, we're kind of not getting into that yet, that's coming, as the mayor said, but a- as it's presented to us, I think what's proposed is viable.
Okay, thank you.
I think the, the, the other thing that we should note here as it relates to, um, the Sears is, the exterior of this building will get completely upgraded as a result of this user coming along. So, we call it our S1 package, but essentially a brand-new paint job, power wash, you probably won't recognize the Sears when it's done, but, um, this, this, this obviously has a lot of great frontage on State Route 57, and as Jordan spoke to earlier, you, you gotta get the first one right. And so, we want to set a new standard here, we want to set a new, a new level of, um, of excellence as it relates to the quality of the redevelopment. And so, that's gonna be an important part of this for us, is, uh, when you see that site plan approval from us, you'll see that the, the exterior building improvements that we will contemplate here will really freshen this thing up.
Um, uh, my question is in regards to the outdoor storage piece, because I'm, I'm sensing amongst the group that there is comfort everywhere, but the, the outdoor storage piece hasn't been addressed, I don't think, in a way where I've found that there's consensus yet. Um, and so the options were for us to, and help me understand the options, uh, Mr. Farkas and Mr. Taylor. So one, one option is, um, they voluntarily, uh, um, withhold, especially for this parcel, the ability for outdoor storage, knowing that this tenant doesn't need outdoor storage. And then, um, so that's one option. I guess I want to put that one, one on the table first and, and hear from ICP, your thoughts on that, that, that one, uh, because from my understanding, this tenant doesn't need the outdoor storage per se, and so we could address that issue and move on. And then in the overlay, when we address, we can go into more, um, you know, descriptive and perscriptive on, here's what we allow, won't allow, here will be our process for, uh, variances or, or, um, adjustments made. Um, is, would ICP be comfortable moving forward with, with and without the outdoor stores today with the expectation that we're gonna talk about an overlay, which will provide that kind of flexibility and new process for us to, uh, make sure the city's protected, et cetera?
I, I think on the overlay, Mayor, we're totally fine with that approach. I, I think here, just because, while I, like I said, majority of their locations, they don't have it, but they may need it here, a small amount of it here. If we could, if we could move for, I think the existing L1 zoning, Jordan, once again, correct me if I'm speaking out of term, but I think if we were to rezone to L1, outdoor storage would be permitted, but what we would contemplate is adding a proviso here that basically says, if there were outdoor storage contemplated, it would have to be properly screened and it would have to be reviewed and approved by this commission. And I'm even, I'm even willing, I'm even willing to go so far as to kind of, as we come in to, to, to highlight exactly where that would be. Mayor, I don't know if I can share my screen real quick.
Yeah, yeah, uh, go ahead.
Okay, let me, let me show you, because that might help everybody. So this is, this is just kind of the Google Earth image of, of the Sears. Here's, here's State Route 57 running north-south, but this is the loading, current loading area here for the Sears. So, if, if, it's a big if, but if outdoor storage were required for this particular user, I would contemplate that it would really only be in this small area, and that if it were to happen, that we would be able to screen this appropriately, particularly as it relates to, uh, to, yeah, visibility from the roadway. Um, so, just so everyone has an idea of what that could look like, this particular user, it would probably be limited to this area of the Sears.
Chris, I don't, I don't know if you want to drop down to street view, but I was looking at this earlier, too. You know, there's really not much of a sightline back to that side of the building from 57, from the public right of way today, given the Sears Auto Center. Um, so, you know, I think that plays to our advantage as well.
Yeah, so you're talking about, you know, this little area there as you approach, but to Jeff's, Jeff's point, as you're approaching from, from the south, you're soon to be screened here by the auto center, which we don't, which we don't plan on taking down. So, that, that would be that, that would be that area right back in there, that they potentially have a small amount of outdoor storage.
I hope y'all paint the auto building, too, because these buildings are horrendous just looking at.
Yeah, they, like I said, they look like bomb shelters, so we'll, uh, we'll clean those up.
Not a pleasant sight to look at. Um, so, uh, committee, what's your thoughts about the, 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 and you mentioned, Jordan, that there was another place in the city where you felt like there was, there was a process that people had to go through in order to, um, to, uh, to put the screening up, they had to go through design review and, or some sort of process to get approval for that, um, for that coverage?
Well, a- again, the, the, the language that I read, which comes out of chapter 1170 of the city's code, which is the Technology Park District, although it may appear elsewhere in the code as well, um, that, that's the language that really establishes the standard. To, to Chris's point, we would anticipate that we would still need to submit a, a development plan, um, that would be reviewed under the city's existing, um, development plan review process to verify that, that the screening meets the requirements, um, that, that I read.
Mr. Farkas, do you read that the same, that there would be a, another checkpoint in this process where we would have a chance to see beforehand?
Give me one moment. You said that was in the, uh, TPO district?
Yes.
Well, no, I'm just speaking in general, aside from the TPO district, do you see the same sort of process happening, that there would be another checkpoint back to us?
With limitations, as, as mentioned earlier in the conversation, anything accessory to the primary use, uh, as mentioned, storage, truck trailers that may be docked, uh, at the actual docking bay or parked somewhere else in preps of being docked, um, is still part of the accessory use. I don't know if necessarily the code is that site-specific that says you have to screen that, because it's not a permanent thing. They come and they pull the trailer, they leave. Um, I'll use examples of Walmart on Chestnut Collins, that's a prime example. You have a large retail business that has an outdoor garden area, that is a site-screen area that is attached to the building, it is an accessory use on its own, but it is properly screened. And that, from a visual perspective, is less impactful than seeing, as mentioned, I mentioned to the mayor in the past, of multiple shipping containers, that is a potentiality of, you name it, colors being placed sporadically throughout the site, of which the zoning code would, I would have to say, I can't really push, but with the overlay requirements would give us a little more teeth, I would say, to say, hey, we'd like to.
So in the future, so I would, I guess my, my thing would be to, to, um, um, to, to ICP, uh, we'll, we'll open up for other questions, but I was just gonna speak to, because I don't want to keep mixing these overlay conversations. I think it's important, we're gonna have that discussion, but I want to treat this as, as what it is, because this is more time-sensitive and we need to, you know, make a decision based upon how comfortable we feel. Uh, but I was thinking about, um, uh, you know, i- if we, if we do do the overlay, then the overlay can address a lot of these concerns we have. Um, and would ICP be amenable to accepting those, uh, restrictions that we put into the overlay as, once we go through that whole administrative, legislative process?
Yes, I believe that would be, that would be agreeable to us. Um, and this, this outdoor storage issue, we, we could address in a similar fashion, such that we would need to come to the city and show them where that could be and what it would consist of, how it would be screened, and have this commission, uh, have the ability to say yay or nay.
Mayor, may I interject?
Yeah, please.
I think right now, while we're just doing this zoning, and again, when we get to the overlay, I think Mr. Salata's explained it can be part of the overall process. If we limited at this point, while we're just doing the rezoning, to the area that I don't know who, who was Jeff or whoever, Chris showed, if we either did a deed restriction or some other type of limitation for now, and then when the overlay comes in, I'm hoping they would put this into the overlay, because it still fits in as general business with a, with an light industrial overlay, then you can control it even better, and you can even make adjustments to this as, as Mr. Salata and their company develops new tenants, they maybe needs to come back to Darrow and his commission or the council. And I think from, this is my perspective, I'm just the planning commission attorney, but when you get to city council and their legal council, which is different in the city of Aleria, they get to, these same questions are gonna come up. So if we kind of address them now, I think it's gonna be easier.
Exactly.
On the road, if this passes, to then go to council and say, we're willing initially for this rezoning to limit that, that storage area, or whatever you want to call it, they will buffer it, we'll limit it to this point, either by deed restriction or by ordinance, and then if we go from there, and then as we get to the overlay, if we get to that project, which I hopefully do, um, then that can cover the whole thing, and, and Mr. Salata's company can agree to throw this parcel, because when we do the re, the overlay, you're gonna do the whole mall, I would assume, would be the whole, not just specific sections.
Yeah. So, so to that question, um, Jim, are we able to put a restriction on a certain area and say, we allow outdoor storage in a certain area? Are we able to do that?
I think you might want to do it by a deed restriction at this point, because if we just do the zoning, the zoning just says, as Daryl said, there's no limits, it's just what can be done, and you have to follow it. So initially, I think you'd have to do it with a deed restriction, in my opinion. So, Jordan, you may, you may have a different thought process on that, or Daryl?
Uh, so you're saying approve the rezone with the deed restriction?
For now, and then again, that can be.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I just wanted to, that's what you're proposing, Jordan, and Chris, would you be comfortable with that, if we identified a location on the site that we all agree to? And I, I, I haven't necessarily heard that concern from the rest of the committee members, by the way, but to Jim's point, this is gonna be a conversation we're gonna have with council members, et cetera, so it's best to have the answer now, then.
Have it referred back to us or something?
Yeah, exactly.
Look, while I, while I'm still a licensed attorney in the state of Ohio, uh, I only wear, I only wear that hat when I need to, so I'll defer to Jordan and, uh, Jim, on, on if that gets it done on the blocking and tackling side of the legal.
Yeah, no, we, uh, Jim, I understand the concern and, 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 yeah, I, I, on the one hand, I, I do think that the city in its ordinance could, could approve the rezoning subject to that limitation, but I also understand, um, that, that, the, the city's preference for that to, to appear in a deed restriction, um, that, that, yeah, could be, could be modified, subject to, uh, agreement of the city.
Sure.
A deed restriction in the city's, in, in the city's favor and.
Does that need to be identified now, the location, or?
I think it would be beneficial.
Okay, all right, I'll, I'll, I'll share my screen. So, um, can you see the map?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, uh, I actually, Zoom allows you to draw on this thing, too, by the way. So, what we're proposing is, uh, to approve, uh, or, I'll ask, but what I'm asking, is there a motion, or, or we're exploring, is there a motion to approve a rezone with a deed restriction with outdoor storage only allowed in the area that you see the square now? And for Mr. Aiden, I, I don't know, you, you're on the phone, uh, this is the area, um, south of Sears, and, um, and they showed on the map how the, uh, the auto center kind of blocks the visuals coming from the south. Um, and this is the side that's kind of facing Johnny K's and facing, not really not facing John, but facing the back of the auto store.
South section. Mayor, before you take that, you have to give the proponents and opponent part in.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just was saying, is that what we're gonna go for when we get to that place of motion? I'm not ready to make the motion, I'm just saying, is this what we're in agreement on?
Well, and, and just to, just to ask a question, but whenever it comes, you know, whenever it's finalized, if they don't, you know, and we hope that they do, but if they don't proceed with light industrial in the next building, you might want to have some screening to the east also, so that whoever's over there is not looking at storage containers, if they're going to be storage containers 10 years from now.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I'm really anxious to get into this overlay piece, because that's where we can really tackle those pieces. All right, so let, let's, let's hear if there's any opponents, any opponents on the call, any opponents, any opponents? Any opponents? Any opponents? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, uh, to approve the rezoning of the said parcels um, for the two parcels that are, and I'm gonna read those parcels off, 064031107042 and 0624030000135, located at 4,94950 Midway Mall, Aleria, Ohio, uh, from Business General District to Light Industrial District, with the condition of a deed restriction allowing only for outdoor storage and the identified map presented to you here.
So move.
Moved, who was that?
Mr. Tabro.
Moved by Mr. Tedrow, is there a second? Second by Ms. Calvert, is there any further discussion? Second by Ms. Calvert, is there any further discussion?
And wouldn't we want to add to that, though, with, with our approved screening even for that?
With appropriate buffing to be approved, which we've all agreed to, whether it ends up being a brick wall or landscaping, we have to see what it's gonna be.
Yeah, okay, right, right, okay.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, just, Mr. Chairman? Yes, I was looking for you, I, yes, sorry. Um, just, I, I just had a question too, and this just relates to any legislation we would have to draft coming out of this. So, for clarification, what we're saying is you're going to rezone it um, subject to a deed restriction that, is it prohibiting outdoor storage except in that highlighted area that you have on your map, subject to buffering restrictions? Is that a fair approximation of the motion?
That's why, that's why I love when you, when you summarize it, that was it very concisely. Do you agree, Mr. Salata?
I do.
Yeah, that was it, perfect. I wish I could have said that.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, any further discussion? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Alright. All those opposed, nay? And were there any abstentions? Alright, motion carries unanimously. Alright, so now, thank you, Chris, you're welcome to stick around for this part of the discussion if you want, and your team, uh, we're gonna shift to talk about the zoning overlay. And so Stephanie Mercado is engaged with the city and helping us with economic development. Um, and she uh, is an expert at this stuff, so she's gonna give us some background about what a what zoning overlay is. Uh, what we are recommending that there be no vote on this today. Uh, I would like for us to schedule a special planning commission meeting, either for the nineteenth, for the nineteenth, if that's available for you all, where we would actually vote on uh, the language as well as vote on the parcels. So, the part of this discussion will just be for educational purposes, and then we would actually have a, a formal meeting on the nineteenth, or the, the week of the nineteenth, I'll say, to actually vote on um, the language and the parcels, if that's okay with everyone. Seeing as, so, so Stephanie, I'll pass it to you if you want to introduce yourself and share um, what we'll be talking about here with the zoning overlay.
Hey Mayor, real quick, uh, I do have to jump to another call, but I think Jeff and Jordan are gonna stay on, on our behalf, but I wanted to, you know, thank everybody today for, uh, for their, uh, consideration and, uh, it's, it's a pleasure to meet everybody, at least electronically, hopefully we're in a world real soon where we can all meet in person. And we're looking, and, uh, our company is, uh, is privileged to be working here with the city of, of Aleria and, uh, and in Lorain County, and we're excited to move forward, so thank you very much. Happy New Year.
Thank you for investing into this.
You got it. Take care.
Alright, Stephanie, passing it back to you again. Stephanie's gonna, I know you might need to get some water or something, we've been at it for an hour and a half, but Steph, with, Stephanie's gonna talk to you just to, overall, what is a zoning overlay? And then we're gonna talk about how the city can use that tool, and then we can actually get into some of the details of what we want to talk, what we want to vote on for our next meeting. So today will be really high level, we'll queue up how we want to vote and what we want to vote on, uh, for our special planning commission meeting.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for having me present at the, the commission meeting today. Um, just to ask, you know, can everybody see the PowerPoint presentation that I've shared?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great, wonderful. Um, so we're going to take some time to talk about what a redevelopment overlay district in general would look like. I'm sorry, oh, that's amazing, okay. Um, so just to kind of give us a little bit of an agenda of the topics that we're gonna talk through. Um, the first is what is an overlay district in general? What's the process to adopt it within the city? We're gonna take a little bit of a deeper dive on the actual proposed redevelopment overlay district definition and requirements that we've put together for the planning uh, commission and then um, discuss its potential application to um, areas in the ci, in, in the city and exactly why we're taking this approach. Um, and then I'm gonna open it up for questions and discussion. However, at any point um, in the presentation, feel free to interrupt me if there's any points of clarification that you guys would like to talk through. Um, a little bit about myself, uh, I am president of a company called Movado. Um, we're a special economic development and community planning advisory company. Uh, I have been working in the economic development and planning field for probably over fifteen years now. I actually, um, I'm thrilled to be working in Aleria. It is, I'm not, um, uh, my family's not originally from Ohio, but we moved to Aleria in the early nineties. My parents still live uh, off of Chestnut, Chestnut Ridge Road, and I'm there several days a week, so I'm excited to um, be engaged in a professional capacity and help the community, uh, community grow. Um, I started out as, uh, as an attorney in Aleria, and great to work with Jim again, uh, before transitioning into community and economic development um, in the near west side of Cleveland, and then I moved on to work, uh, representing Jobs Ohio at a regional level. And then, um, for the past couple of years, I've transitioned back into the private sector, both as a consultant and, um, and affiliated with a law firm in Cleveland. Uh, but for the specific purposes, really looking at, at work as a, as a consultant in terms of how Aleria can be more competitive to win investment and execute on some stra, uh, strategic projects. So, the first question, um, that, that, just to ask is what is an overlay district? So, included a definition from the American Planning Association, says an overlay zone is a zoning district which is applied over one or more previously established zoning districts established um, that establish additional or stricter standards or criteria for covered properties um, in, uh, addition to those of the underlying zone district. Also, according to the APA, and you'll, you, we can go through a couple of case studies if you'd like to at a later point in time, but the general use of, uh, of an overlay, uh, uh, comes into place for use of historic districts, national resource, uh, natural resource protection, economic development considerations. Um, generally, local governments have broad authority on how to implement their own overlays. Um, but it, so it can be used to promote specific development projects such as mixed-use developments, waterfront developments, um, housing or affordable housing. Um, but ultimately, I think that the common theme that, that we should be thinking about when you're thinking of an overlay district is that the, your current, there is a lack of a current zoning solution to support the desired land use outcomes. Um, and just in, in terms of looking at our previous discussion that we had on the agenda, um, I think the, one of the commission members asked if the process could be done through, um, through conditional use provision. And right now, Aleria's code, um, does not have list of conditional use of warehousing um, in a general business district, so there's not a solution, you know, for that, that, uh, prior agenda item, and that's why there is a request to do a zoning change. So that's really what we're trying to come up with a solution. Um, as to, to support the city's desired development outcomes when there currently isn't a, a zoning solution on the books that would support that. I included a map of Lakewood, just to show you as an example what an overlay district would look on the map. They do have legal authority to implement an overlay district. If you look at this bottom right-hand corner, you will see it's kind of a, um, black grid that is placed over the existing zoning. Um, so that is one area, uh, that Lakewood has an overlay district. Uh, and then there is another one, it's really little, along Detroit. Um, uh, we can certainly share their language, but just as an example to, to illustrate what this would look like um, on a zoning map. So, the question is, is, the next question is, is how does, um, how do we adopt an overlay district? If this is something that the city is interested in, in pursuing? Um, the first is that it requires an amendment to the code. Um, as we discussed in the, the previous agenda item, the current municipal code does not have any provision or guidance as to how to, uh, uh, implement an overlay district. So the first step in the process is that we have to amend code language. Um, and going through that process at the city, we, especially when we're dealing with zoning, that, that requires review and comment on the proposed language from planning commission. Um, the desired would be to have a recommendation of the amendment to council, and then council would go through its uh, its process of, um, approving that subject to public notices and public hearings. But this, the, the general step is to first amend the code. And then, once you have the, once you've got the authority in the code, then the next step is to amend the, uh, amend the zoning map where you, you would designate a certain area or areas in the city on the zoning map to be designated, it's a redevelopment overlay district. Um, under the same process as you would go through, through, for current amendments to the, to the zoning map. Um, meaning it can be initiated by a private owner, or it can be city-initiated. So, those are the two steps, amend the code and then amend the, the zoning map. So, while we're not asking for any formal action to be taken today, that I would say we are in this first step in terms of kind of reviewing what the concept is and what the potential, what the initial proposed language is. Um, and then, uh, but I know we're scheduling a special, special meeting to take an initial action, but just to orient you as to where we are in this process. So, um, in your packets, uh, you were provided some proposed language uh, of what a redevelopment overlay district code amendment would look like. And I'm not gonna go through it word by word, but I would like to provide, um, some guidance over the intent and then some provisions that the commission should be aware of to, to, um, give some strategic thought to as you're preparing, uh, your written remark, uh, recommendations and report back to council. Um, the first is really what is the intent of, for, uh, uh, of this overlay? Um, the intent is, is, you know, two components of it. The first is to uh, support the redevelopment of underutilized vacant inflated areas uh, for the furtherance of economic growth vitality, vitality and resurgence. Um, looking at, uh, you know, just taking this example of vacant shopping centers um, where there is a desire to come up with a plan that supports job creation and redevelopment where there is not an available, um, uh, mechanism in your current municipal code to support that. That would be one, how that meets that component. Um, and then the second is really to, to support designs that are intended to encourage flexibility, innovation um, and creativity on site planning and development design by allowing the mixing of permitted uses and um, and/or the modification of variation of otherwise applicable zone district and development standards. So, once again, overview, the intent of this is to help, um, support redevelopment of underutilized and vacant properties um, and also to encourage design flexibility, um, that aligns with the city's desired, um, desired outcomes. So, in the language that was provided, um, I want you to think about a couple of items as we're looking at, as we're referencing to what is the base, um, the base district and the overlay district. So, uh, so for example, if you're looking at, you know, I can, I can probably talk through this as an example, um, even referencing back to the prior agenda item, that your base district is a business general and your overlay district would be proposed to be, um, a light industrial. Um, the current, uh, proposed language, uh, allows both, uh, primary uses of both the base and the overlay. So, when you're looking at business, uh, business general and light industrial, you would have, uh, solved the issue of whether you can have warehousing, you know, on, on a business general um, district. Um, the same language applies to conditional use, that you've got the ability to, uh, develop for both base and um, both your base and overlay. Um, for setbacks, we included language that favors the most restrictive set, um, setback regarding adjacency to a residential zone. So if, if you are overlaying, um, a we'll just stick with the light industrial overlay, if the, oh, the overlay has a more stricter standard for development adjacent to residential zone, that stricter standard is going to prevail. Um, it's not a choice of either or, it's in, always in favor of adjacent, um, residential zones. Um, the next is with regards to parking. So the current language favors the base, um, the base zone, but I would suggest, um, that the, the commission then put some thought into potentially making a recommendation um, that the parking, uh, parking requirements could be either based on either the base or the overlay district. Um, outdoor storage, uh, current language is prohibitive. However, uh, and as we discussed in the last agenda item, the commission could recommend that um, additional circumstances with, with, um, proper screening and prior approval from planning commission would, uh, would permit outdoor storage when there is, when, when that overlay is in place. Um, the final area, which I, I called other, um, is just to clarify that the, uh, um, the current language proposed, the overlay would only be eligible as, in a business general, as a base district. So, there, you know, certainly we are talking about the mall, but there can be other areas in the city. Um, uh, just the, think of areas that might have other vacant shopping centers that you might want to take a creative uh, approach to redevelopment, and it does not have to be as large as Midway Mall, but look, thinking about other areas of the city that are zone business general that need some flexibility from a zoning, uh, perspective. The, um, the major restriction is that heavy industrial is prohibited from the overlay. So, if a private landowner is seeking to petition the city to, to, um, place an overlay on a, a particular piece of property, that heavy industrial language would be prohibited um, under the, the current language that we have. So the question is, why is the over, overlay needed in Aleria? Um, the, the first is really to support a comprehensive vision for redevelopment. Um, and also to provide proactive development guidance. So, instead of, uh, private property owners looking at potential redevelopment and having to take a site through either on a parcel-by-parcel basis, that looking at an overlay, the city can target and provide that proactive development guidance um, to, to potential developers and land, landowners about what type of uses are prohibited, are permitted, um, and also prohibited. Uh, so, and, and that really, that proactivity gets to what I put on the bottom of the slide, I I always look at all business decisions are made based on speed, money and risk. So, if the city is proactive, um, in, in a redevelopment strategy, you are, you are eliminating time period that is needed to take through certain parcels to get rezoned. Um, and then you're also addressing a risk issue that your private development partner knows and can market properties to potential end users, um, because they've got a, a, an awareness of what, what permissible uses are, are provided. Um, it also allows for the mixed, uh, mixed use both of current and future development in addressing this issue specifically of the, the, the conflict between retail end uses and warehousing in your current code. And then ultimately, the goal is to really help the city compete for, for investment. So this is a high level of what a overlay district is, what the proposed language is for planning commission to consider, and, uh, what the process would look like through taking this through, through the city for approval. And then finally, really establishing the reasons why we're, we're considering this as to, opposed to finding a solution within your current zoning code. Are there, are there questions from the commission members?
Thank you for that, Stephanie. So, um, again, uh, I, I would, I would want to start with Mr. Farkas because again, this is gonna be a tool, tool that's gonna be in our zoning playbook now and um, you know, kind of what are your thoughts about the overlay, what's important from your perspective? You know, she, she put a couple scenarios up, you know, it only being available for business general. Um, and not heavy industrial not being an option, like some of those pieces. Can you go back to that slide?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do. Here we go. Emily, this is the slide that you were referring to.
Oh, well, my, my comments would be, I, I
Oh, well, my, my comments would be, I I have attached my report and I. The zoning requirements are pretty much repetitive to my past reports for business general what's permitted, light industrial what's permitted. Uh, the permitted accessory uses as explained in the past meeting for outside storage was a concern. Um, I will jump right to my recommendations based on what was given to me. Um, per the new ordinance language proposed. The overlay would require outside storage areas to be suitably screened by a fence or dense landscaping. So that the exterior storage areas are not visible from neighboring sites, lots, common areas or public roads. Uh, per the fence requirements of the Elyra codified ordinance, chapter eleven thirty seven, specifically section eleven thirty seven fifteen. Excuse me, states, the maximum height of a commercial fence is eight feet contingent, the height is approved in advance by the building inspector. The height requirements coupled with the fence location regulations, front and rear yard. Would limit the locations of the storage areas and also storage heights permitted. Thus assuring the materials are properly concealed as described in. I'll expound on that particular comment as mentioned with the Walmart scenario. There are creative solutions to get around about the specific standalone fencing requirement if that is an option. But depending on the person that goes there, whatever business goes in, I guess we can cross that bridge when we get to it. Um, the next one I wrote is the proposal also evokes parking space requirements. At purely lyric codified ordinance, section eleven seventy five for the new district. Uh, as the new permitted overlay use for light industrial may alter current parking patterns flow and access. Contingent upon the specific nature of the business. I'm going to defer to the engineering department and fire department for further input. As the grand scope of what is really going to take place here is kind of up in air, depending on who comes in and what the seed company does. Uh, it does create, as you mentioned, Stephanie, food for thought of the parking pattern, which what should we consider? It was geared for a mall type atmosphere, many parking spaces where we may not have that requirement now in a light industrial atmosphere. Depending on the number of people that are employed, but it is food for thought. Uh, in closing, the site is compiled comprised primarily a business general district. Of which consists of multiple diverse establishments in and around the area. The board must consider how proposals such as this will maintain the integrity of the butting zoning districts map attached. And the pre-established business general district, if approved, the overlay classification would permit any use described herein. And based on the above information, I recommend the board consider the long-term impacts. I I think this particular overlay, uh, is actually gives us much, much more control. In regards to what is permitted. Um, those light industrial at its core would allow certain manufacturing and whatever else comes along with it. So for the board's consideration, do, uh, take that into account.
If I can ask you a quick, can I ask you a quick question? Um, I'm just trying to understand is, is this basically like a new type of zoning or what, what specifically? Are we gaining with the overlay district? Is it something on top of our current zoning or is it like a different class of property?
Don, do you want to say don?
Yeah, I can, I could speak to that and Stephanie, feel free to fill in if I'm misspeaking at all. First, this is an additional class. So you're, you're. The boundary that we would eventually determine would allow the use of what would typically be permitted with general business. In addition to industrials subject to any restrictions we would. Create at the time that we implemented the zoning overlay with specific parcels. So this language enables us to be able to do that. And in like the the plainest terms of why we're suggesting this as. Um, a solution is because we, we have a chicken and the egg problem. We have vacant properties that need to be redeveloped. The vision for the city is that those be redeveloped. In the best possible way that would enable the biggest economic impact. Specific to midway mall, that is likely to be. Distribution and logistics with infill restaurants. Um, you know, as you heard from Mr. Salata to service that daytime population. This, when, when I speak with the brokers out there. They cannot sell it for that purpose because it's not currently zoned. There are, it, it means risk and delay. That somebody would not be able to purchase that property for its intended use. Right? So they can now purchase the property with the intention of having a warehousing space there. Have to petition us to change that zoning, then get turned down and say no. So it is, um. It allows us that flexibility with a level of control and enabling the speed to market. That will help encourage redevelopment and encourage developers to take a look at it seriously. So the perfect, I mean, the perfect example is the request we had earlier to rezone the Sears building to. Um, light industrial. We're doing just that one building. This enables us to to define the district where we want to see this kind of development. And have that flexibility where we're overcoming that hurdle of the traditional rezoning request.
So if I'm understanding things correctly. We're creating a new type of property that kind of would would almost span both the current. The, the, the current uses. And what where we kind of see it going with some accompanying legislation that would allow the city to. In essence, declare that entire area, this new type of. Zone, is that what we're looking at?
Exactly.
That's.
So that in the future, this would not even be a rezoning. They would buy it, they'd have to get, I would assume, a use. Uh, a, um. Site plan or something like that if they were actually working at structures, but otherwise. It would be within the current zoning where right now it's not.
Yeah, so that's, that's a, that's, um. The problem we're trying to solve is the one we just got faced with, you know. Half an hour ago, you know, so this would allow us. You know, to, to the, the one they they're able to now market the site that way and say, Elyria is ready for this usage if you want come. Um, and then I gives us some control with somebody's concerns we have like, hey, but yeah. We want you to come, but we don't want you having like, we would have already had that determined like. Here's our, here's what we feel about outdoor storage. That's all laid out. So there's no surprises. You know, you can come here, but you can't put salt and rocks in a parking lot, you know.
And just to clarify if I can for a moment, mayor, um, just so we're, we're all. What Stephanie has presented us here today is. The language, the first key is we don't have language in our code that allows us to do this. So the first step in the process is adopting new language in in our ordinances. That it allows us to then create these overlay districts. A second process would come forth when we would determine exactly which parcels are included in the overlay. You know, we would go through the public notification process. We would determine whether there were additional requirements subject to, you know, for the outdoor storage. Or whatever that instance would be at that time when those individual districts are implemented.
I have a question, would mixed use be be a more attractive? As a development, a tool, a redevelopment tool in case a light industrial tenant does not work out. They have the flexibility to alter. Uh, if, if, you know, the light industrial route doesn't work, it would be an alternative. Am I right or am I wrong?
No, that's, that's correct. So by keeping both the permitted, the primary uses, permitted uses. Of both the base and the overlay, the property owner has the ability. To market both of those uses versus. If you were just keeping the base, you can't market it for light industrial. If you did a complete zoning change to light industrial. You wouldn't be able to market it for retail if there was the, the desire to have that. So. Having, having the two, the one base on top of the other. Kind of gives you the, the best of both, uh, the flexibility from a use perspective on both zoning districts.
So do we consider this mixed use because of the way that we're, is that considered, is that essentially considered, it's mixed use? Business general slash industrial, is that what I'm understanding, but nothing else or?
You, you, so let, let me take.
On this, if we were doing this specific parcel where the, the balance of the mall is, we'll use.
Yeah, if you're going to do midway mall, it would be the, the recommended approach would be to have. A bit, it'd be business general as your base and you would overlay that with light industrial. Now the, when we were looking at making a recommendation of even changing the code. Um, we know that that midway mall is a targeted, targeted site. But what other areas in the city could this be a tool for in the future? You might have in, in business general properties, um, are typically going to have. Uh, the, the most, if they're, if they're blighted or vacant, they have the most flexibility of. Adaptive mixed use redevelopment as compared to. If you are, if there, let's just say there's a heavy industrial site. You're likely not going to ever rezone that to be residential or or something like that for, for, um. Uh, environmental purposes. So that's probably going to be, that's why, why we thought that business general, you would have the most flexibility. And, um, you could have the, the greatest use. Now in midway mall, we're, we would recommend a light industrial overlay. There could possibly be other areas in the city where your overlay is of a residential component to give it more of that. Kind of a, of a, um, a retail and multifamily housing. Feel to it as opposed to what we're looking at at the mall is more of a retail slash leaning towards light industrial. So. You've got flexibility, but that's on a, on a case by case basis as it's initiated to to bring through. So you set the boundaries. And of the overlay district and then you, and then through the same legislation. You define what that overlay is that you're applying. You could, you could, uh. You could place a technology, uh, the technology district overlay on it. Um, the only overlay that is prohibited is heavy industrial because that is something that the city wants to. Limit to very specific areas in the, in the community.
So if I'm understanding things right, I think I understand what the problem is. I, I'm, I'm trying to figure out or make clear in my mind how this solves the problem. It sounds like. What this ultimately would allow us to do is have a single parcel that is in effect. Uh, concurrently in two different zoning classes where prior, where previously.
Yes.
You would have rezoned the entire area and the. Properties that were existing before that would have in essence been grandfathered in under their current use. What we're basically saying is now either, either use would be acceptable because they are ineffective in two different zoning.
Yeah, and Barry, the only thing I would, I would push a little bit on is that. The goal for this isn't necessarily to identify specific parcels as much as areas. You know what I mean? So we're thinking about this from a, like, because the mall has a bunch of parcels, but we're thinking, all right. How can we make this whole area have this overlay where the, the whole site can be marketed as? Multiple.
Right, so in your transition area, or I guess my thought would be then, and and that entire area, you'd say either industrial, either light industrial. Or general businesses is permitted so that you're not continually bouncing individual parcels back and forth.
Exactly.
The area contains both, where right now we have to bounce them back and forth.
Exactly.
We could make districts outside of the actual mall campus that are of a different mixed use if we wanted to incorporate. Housing and retail mixed in those areas that border this, you know, ma- main property.
Absolutely. From a, um, just overlay districts are. A common tool that communities, um, evaluate, especially with looking at mall redevelopment. Just based on that inconsistent, um, use of what it, what it historically has been used for. And then what the desired outcome is, um, how that's implemented, the. How it's worded just depends on two things. Number one, what the, um, what the, uh. Current municipal code is and number two, really what that desired, um, end uses. There's a couple of mall studies. That, that instead of doing a light industrial overlay favor more, um, residential. Just based on the, because that's what the plan is. So, but this gives flexibility, not only to what the city wants to see out of the mall. But really looking at other parts of the cities as well.
Stephanie, just a question for clarification for me and for the members. This just works for general business and industrial. If you did do what Chad suggested, which I think is great. And residential with business or whatever, that's a different overlay. Is that correct?
Yeah, well, so the language of what's been proposed. Only allows you to have this overlay in areas that is, is a base business general. So if that, that's what it's limited to in the language right now. I suppose you could, you could, if it's a base business general. There could be a proposal to potentially overlay it with a, some sort of residential zoning if that helps the. The, the, that particular project move forward, but that would be taken on a case by case basis. But the two, the two main restrictions are that you can only explore this option if it's currently zoned business general. And you can never overlay it with a heavy industrial zone. Those are the two, the two main restrictions.
Thanks. That's in our current language, this being.
Yeah, in the current, correct.
Right. So that's what the purpose of this discussion is to really hear. From you all, as well as we have a case study with, uh, the ICP team of like. When they are looking for these sort of overlays, what are, what are the things that they're looking for? Um, and to take that and then take this feedback, work with, um. Uh, the internal team here at the city and then next meeting, we actually vote on that language. And then actually have, uh, potentially have some parcels identified, the mall being the, the first practice that is. To be able to say, hey, we, we want, we want this overlay to apply to this location, you know. So here's the legislation we're proposing and here is an example of where we think it should be used. Um, so I, ICP, anything that you guys want to add, Jordan or Jeff, if you're still on. To kind of share about, you know, what you're looking for, is it just a prospective? Uh, developer, which you're, the type of things you're looking for in these overlays.
This is, this is Jordan. I, I, I really appreciate the discussion here. Um, it, it, it does a great job.
Breaking up a little bit, Jordan.
City and, and, and why, uh, in our cases.
You're breaking up, Jordan.
Flexibility.
Yeah, Jordan, Jordan, we lost you for a while there, so we didn't hear anything you said.
Yeah, Mayor Woodfield, Mayor Woodfield, this is.
I, I think ultimately it just allows us to cast the net to a wider audience of potential end users and. You know, does provide that flexibility of, you know, looking at office users, industrial users. Uh, you know, commercial, well, restaurant users, you know, it definitely provides great flexibility.
And what about some of the restrictions that we're proposing? So the outdoor storage was one where we just had, again, a case study of. Hey, here's, here's one of the issues. If you take it all the way off the table, it could create this new challenge with. Maybe, you know, our biggest concern is the, again, the rocks, the salt. The rainbow colored stuff in the parking lot, you know, things where it's just like, wow, this is not what we wanted. You know, what should, you know, from a business perspective, what's your, you know, thoughts around those restrictions and. Um, outdoor storage seeming to be the major one.
Yeah, my, my thoughts are, I mean, we don't want noxious uses on the site either, uh, because we're trying to attract. You know, a, a first rate project with, you know, quality tenants that are going to be there for long-term. Um, contracts and leases. So, you know, I think, you know, as, as Chris Salata had mentioned, we're certainly willing to, you know, abide by that language that. Was recited a little bit earlier in terms of proper screening and fencing and just concealing of. Any outdoor storage and give the planning commission and the city a chance to look at that on a case by case.
Yeah, it just to sort of play off of, uh, of Jeff's comments and hopefully you can hear me now. Um, uh, from, I think from our perspective, and this is, this is true. You know, with, with regard to zoning across the board, but especially where, um, where part of the, the purpose of. Um, of a zoning classification or a zoning tool like the overlay district is to encourage development or redevelopment. Um, what's really important from the, from the developer side, from the, the land user, the end users side. Is, is some, some measure of certainty. Um, and it's a, obviously it's a balancing act. Um, the, the city, we understand wants to maintain, um, a certain level of control. Um, doesn't want to write a blank check, um, for, for, um, particular uses that could be. Um, that, that, that could be offensive, um, or, or inconsistent with, uh, with adjacent uses. By the same token, um, you know, continuing to use ICP as a, as the case study. Um, you know. You know, for purposes of marketing the 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 property and for attracting tenants. It's important that we have some certainty regarding what uses are available. Even even with an overlay district which expands the the uses from those of the underlying zoning. It's important to to have conditions that are clear. So that so that we know the rules and we can make sure that one, we're playing by them and two, that we're attracting. End users who who are willing to to play by those rules. By the same token, we don't want to scare them off. And when I say scare them off, I don't mean because the rules are onerous. I mean, because of a lack of certainty. You know, for for us to 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 market the property and attract users, but simultaneously say, and I'm not suggesting at all that this is what. What any of you are considering, I'm just suggesting it as a possibility. If the city were to to say. That that they'll simply determine outdoor storage on a case by case basis without any standards. Where does that leave the the perspective end user or or us in marketing the property to know what what will ultimately be successful? That's why. Frankly, that's what what we found attractive about the language that appears elsewhere in your code. It it seems sensitive to the. The legitimate concerns that you have over over something like outdoor storage, but 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 provide some clear ground rules. So so we know. What what the expectation is so that we can make sure that we're marketing the property to end users who can. Live with and meet those expectations and 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 so that that we don't have to, we don't have to do things and. Frankly, in the manner that we're now asking you to do things, you know, come coming in a rush because we've got somebody who needs an answer yesterday. And we're going to lose them if we don't get it. That's not, that's not your fault. I'm not suggesting it is, but I think what you're trying to avoid, just like we are. Is 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 perpetuating a situation that 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 involves that. And and the overlay district with with the, you know, the clear conditions, clear restrictions. I I I I think I think accomplishes that goal.
So so what our next steps would be would be for our commission members, I want to provide a couple minutes. I know we're way over time to provide some feedback on. Things that you want to make sure are addressed in this language. And then what we'll do is. We'll put work on the language and then send a meeting request out along with, and and again, let's think about Midway Mall as the the first example of this. We would then send out a meeting notice to you all along with all the adjacent property owners that say we're proposing. Over a zoning overlay for said property and then have this language as a part of what's on the agenda as well. So, you know, any other feedback y'all want to provide as we, you know, because we're hoping to get this out in the next couple of days to meet our. Ten day notice requirement and then have the meeting scheduled. Right after that, those ten days expire so that we can vote on the language and then actually vote on an overlay for the mall.
Yeah, Mayor, I would like, well, in the language, will there be? Minimum and maximum requirements like, you know, I don't know what a what a what a city block. I don't know what that square footage is or square yardage would be. So when we or or when we would vote, well, vote on a overlay, would that just be to the to the projects? Been questioned at that time, you know. So could you, I don't think you could say, hey, listen, we got two square miles of property here. We want to throw the overlay. Put an overlay on, you know what I mean? So would it, would there be limitations or is it just going to be on a case by case basis?
The may maybe I can answer answer that to begin to begin with. So the the two standards that we have in the proposed language. Is when there is a a petition to. Amend the zoning map to implement the overlay zone district is that the. The planning commission should be considering when looking at a particular area of land. And I would say whether it's one parcel or fifteen parcels put together is that is this going to. Support the redevelopment of underutilized or vacant or or blighted areas with the furtherance of economic. Growth vitality and resurgence. And then it is also supporting a design that is intended to encourage flexibility, innovation. Other language that we've got here that addresses mi- mixed uses. So that would be. When you're looking at kind of the, let me go one slide back. When we're looking at this process, those are the, we're here right now in terms of. Adopting language to amend the code. The second step is when whether it's Midway Mall, whether it's another part of the city. You are going to receive that petition in the same way that you would receive. A petition to to amend the zoning on a particular particular property or group of properties. That when you're looking to amend that zoning map to implement the district, you're asking. And is this in with the intent to redevelop vacant, blighted, underutilized areas in the city and is it intended to help? Support support the design innovation and mixed use, mixed use development. So the planning commission, based on this current language, those are your. Current standards to give you flexibility in how you're, how you're, how you're viewing that. If it doesn't meet meet those to the commission's opinion, then you don't have to implement the overly district, but those would be the two. The two base requirements that you've got to pass to even have a conversation about this.
I got you. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. So what we'll do then is we'll take this language. We'll take the feedback we got, craft some language, you'll get a notification and we'll have a meeting on the week of January nineteenth. To vote on the language as well as vote on specific parcels to apply this overlay. So thank you, Stephanie, for putting this together and thank you all for your patience. This has been a one of our longer meetings, but. It's one of the more important projects, in my opinion, the most important project in the city right now. So appreciate your patience.
For sure.
You still got, you still have nine and ten on the agenda. Oh, my God, there's somebody else on the agenda. I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. Okay, okay, no, nobody's waiting though. Just, just. Okay, whoa, okay, yeah, yeah, of course. Yeah, I thought I had somebody else waiting. All right. So, yeah, so we have a summary of applications that have been reviewed by the design review staff. List there. Are there any questions about any of those applications? All right, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Mr. Aiden, is there a second? Second, Mr. Schneider. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. And were there any abstentions? All right. Happy New Year. Thank you all again. Good work.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Go Steelers.
I didn't click in fast enough.